Welcome to the Tupelo City Council Meeting of Tuesday, December 6, 6:00 PM. We will start with an invocation by Councilman Buddy Palmer and the pledge of allegiance by Councilman Mike Bryan. Could we please rise?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I'd like to introduce today a good friend of mine and my wife and a great asset to East Tupelo, Brother Terry Pierce from Tupelo Free Wheel Baptist Church. And the reason we love him so much, my wife and I, is he was the pastor of one of the finest godly ladies, my wife's aunt, civil. So, appreciate it, brother.
Amen. So honored to have the invitation for Brother Buddy and all of you, and so let us pray. Your heavenly Father, we thank you for this day, and we are in love with the fact that you care so much about us that you sent your son, Jesus Christ, to redeem us, to save us, and to change our eternal destiny. And Father, I'm thankful to live in a city for the last 15 years, raised three of my boys here. And Father, I'm thankful for what this city stands for. Yeah, I just thank you that in the midst of all the chaos and all of the confusion going on in our country today and around the world, that we still have a place here, a community here that honors you, that allows preachers like me, who's been forever changed by the blood of Jesus Christ, to come and stand before them and pray God's blessings upon the leaders of our community. And God, I do pray for these guys and these ladies, and I thank you for their leadership, and I thank you for what they've meant to me. I thank you that our church serves in this community and the many projects. We work with so many of the civic organizations and just the privilege to work in every area, Father, to make this a better place and for our families to live. And Father, what a privilege it is today just to pray your blessings now upon this council meeting. I pray your blessings upon the city leaders, upon our mayor, and all the decisions that are made here, Father, that will honor you. And God, may you just continue to pour out your blessings upon our community. Bring us together, each and every person, Father, under the name of Jesus Christ. In your name we pray. Amen.
Face the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I call the meeting to order and ask Council Vice President Markel Whittington to confirm or amend the agenda and the agenda order.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to amend the agenda and the agenda order with the following two: deletion of Study Item 8.1, Review and Discuss Resolution Requesting State of Mississippi to Adopt a Flag That Represents All the People; that deletion, and the addition of Routine Item 7.22, Governor's Proclamation Proclaiming Additional Day for Christmas Holiday, Friday, December 23, 2016.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Whittington and a second by Mr. Bryan. All in favor? Motion carries. Item four, Proclamation/Recognition and Reports Agenda. Item 4.1, Recognition of Boys and Girls Scouts; we have none. Item 4.2, Recognition of City Employees, Mayor.
Thank you, President Bryan. This time, it's my honor and privilege to recognize one of our outstanding team members. At this time, would ask Lieutenant Bruce Dodson, please come forward. And Bruce, Lieutenant Dodson's got a good-looking young man with him. Do you want him to come up here and help us if you don't mind? One of the special things that I think's a highlight of our council meetings is an opportunity to recognize the men and women that make the city of Tupelo run smoothly on a day-to-day basis. While the council members, department heads, and myself often get the interviews or get the, you know, the good or the bad publicity, the real work of the city of Tupelo is done by the men and women who make up the workforce of the city of Tupelo. So, at this time, on behalf of the council, the administration, and the city of Tupelo, it's my honor and privilege to issue the following certificate of appreciation with sincere thanks and appreciation to Lieutenant Bruce Dodson for 20 years of dedicated employment with the Tupelo Police Department. Thank you, Lieutenant Dodson. And Mr. Chan Dodson is here to help us.
Any more public recognitions? I'm sorry, city employees?
No, sir.
Okay. Item 4.3, Public Recognitions. We'll do mayor first.
Tupelo is so very proud of so many great things that we have here in the city of Tupelo. You know, I won't go through the list of first and the list of accomplishments that we have here in the city of Tupelo, but while our seal has been replaced with the Christmas wreath, but on our city's seal that's usually hanging there, one thing that we're so very proud of is being an all-America city in the city of Tupelo. And this past year, in 2015, we were honored to receive that designation again. Back in 1967, the first time that Tupelo received this award, it was for two main reasons. One was the way that the city of Tupelo, unlike many other cities in the South, handled the integration of public schools and the civil rights era, how we handled that. The other driving factor, driving force behind the city of Tupelo's receiving that award was the Regional Rehab Center right here in Tupelo, Mississippi. It was a model then, and it continues to be a model. The work that Regional Rehab does is beyond words and beyond measure. And so, this was just passed two Sundays ago, couple Sundays ago, I was with Robbie and different WTVA, different people from around North Mississippi for a fundraiser at the mall for Regional Rehab, and they asked that he come today to share a few words, and also wanted to issue a particular certificate of recognition to the Regional Rehab Center. On behalf of the city of Tupelo, as mayor, it is my distinct honor and privilege to recognize the Regional Rehab Center under the leadership of Mr. Robbie Parham for its outstanding service to the city of Tupelo and surrounding areas. In the past year, they were able to provide services to 1,527 people free of charge. That equaled 26,368 services from 19 different North Mississippi counties. On behalf of the city of Tupelo, just want to thank you, Robbie, and Regional Rehab for bettering the city of Tupelo, Mississippi, and all of North Mississippi.
Well, I would like to, just a few words from the Regional Rehab Center. We want to thank the city of Tupelo, the city council, mayor, all the people who work for the city of Tupelo. We wouldn't be in existence if it wasn't for the city of Tupelo, and we don't take that for granted. And we cannot thank everybody enough for your support. We really, we really appreciate it. If you know of anybody that needs our help, like the mayor said, all our services are free of charge. We don't, we don't charge a person's insurance or Medicaid either. And would love to help. We'll, we'll continue doing the physical therapy, occupational therapy, speech therapy, early intervention, ideology services, but please come by and see us right at 615 Pecrom Drive, and just God bless y'all. We greatly appreciate it. Thank you so much.
All right. Public recognition, starting with Traps?
Yeah. Last week, I was privileged to attend two events in Tupelo, and just want to call special attention to them and the importance of the people who participated. I went to the Citizens Police Academy Training, which was led by Katasha White and our police chief, and we actually had a councilperson, Nettie Davis, attend that. And just being at the awards ceremony and listening to the, to the people who participated, it was beneficial to me and enlightening, and we're going to have another one coming up. I'd like to encourage citizens to sign up for the second training academy. And it'd be beneficial to our community, and also you'll learn a lot about what our police officers go through. Also, I was, went to the lighting at Ballard Park. I think Denny Wade and Alex Bornet did a lot of work on that under his direction. It was much bigger this year than in the past, and just encourage the people, if you hadn't been by to see those lights out there, they got a bunch more lights from over at Fulton that really lights up the park, and it's a beautiful scene. And they shot a few firecrackers out there, too. I had some complaints that their dogs in the neighborhood were shaking and couldn't get them stopped, but if you were there, it was a good event, and I just want to say thank you for putting that on.
Will?
Yes, also, I just want to say, my colleague, Ms. Nettie, is not here tonight because we miss her. She don't normally miss, and we'll just say we hope she soon get well, if she can get back. Also, I visited the high school last week, the senior projects. All the seniors presented their projects last week, and they were fantastic, the show that they put on, and a lot of them that I know personally done projects like Boys and Girls Club. You know, they've done a lot of great things, so I'm glad that they have that senior project going on because it helps the community. And also, Friday night's parade, I was acting mayor for that day. I always had a day, but I'm boasting about mine because I was able to do an interview and tell how well the parade was going, and it was the 68th Annual Parade in Tupelo. So, it was a great parade. I heard a lot of people say it was nicer. All of them nice, but this was nice because they started further back down the street, and it was, whoever was putting this on, I appreciate it, and it was well-attended. So, I just want to say, I enjoy it.
Buddy?
Bye. Next time you go out of town and leave your kids, I came down to City Hall when I was mayor for the day and asked Don for the keys, and he said he took them with him.
Bless you.
Mark?
Yeah.
The only thing I have is, is Downtown Main Street did a great job with the Reed's Christmas Parade. They very organized. There wasn't a bunch waiting around, and once they got going, they did a great job. Alex and his crew did a great job with the lighting at the park. Nettie took a little spill. That's why she's not here. She's on the mend, just kind of sore, so y'all think, keep in your thoughts. And just to the residents in the Joiner area, driving through the Joiner area, Atmos has got a pretty, pretty serious gas leak over there right now. They got Clayton Avenue dug up two places, one block, so make plans to go around that. They'll probably be over there digging for a while, getting it fixed. So, other than that, that's all I have. Item 4.4, the mayor's report.
Thank you, President Bryan. The council covered most everything. I was going to say, just echo the council members' remarks on the lighting of the park. Congratulations Parking Recreation on a job well done. Same for Downtown Main Street Association, Debbie Brangenberg for the Christmas Parade, and of course, ask for your prayers for Councilwoman Nettie Davis. If she was here, I think she would have used part of her time in public recognitions to mention the dedication of the marker at Green Street Grove, also commonly known as Nettie Davis Park, for the Heritage Hills marker there, excuse me, the Heritage Trail marker with CBB for the predominantly African-American community business district there. Thank you, Neil and CBB, for everything you're doing there. Did want to mention for some of our Mississippi State Council members, Coach Dan Mullen of Mississippi State was at Tupelo High School today, so wanted to share that. And just wanted our minutes to reflect that great coach of the Mississippi State Bulldogs is here today. And Boys and Girls Club, North Mississippi, every Boys and Girls Club from north of Highway 82 is in town today for their convention. The meeting agenda was amended to include a proclamation from the governor today. I was fortunate enough to travel, thanks to the permission of the council, and travel with the Mississippi Development Authority on a business and trade mission with the governor to Israel, and it was part of the business trip. I was glad to see that maybe gathered a little additional Christmas spirit from the trip, and we'll get an extra day off for Christmas this year, so certainly hope we pass that. The only other thing I wanted to mention was, though I was out of town, and one item came off the agenda tonight, I know the bicentennial flag, that issue was brought back before the council, and the council decision was made to fly the bicentennial banner from the Mississippi Economic Council for one year at Tupelo Police Department Administrative Headquarters. And I just wanted to thank the council members, each and every one of the council members, for your leadership on this issue and for your willingness to compromise on this issue. It's a hot-button issue that each member of the council, you kind of get hit from all sides on it, and it's an issue that, many times, nobody is happy. So, it's difficult, and I want to just thank you for your leadership on that issue. That would conclude the mayor's report at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, we're going to close the regular meeting and open the public agenda. The public agenda for Item 5.1, Citizens Hearings, Item 5.1A, the Tupelo Plans Accountability Task Force and Town Hall Meetings, Mr. Pete Sims. Now, Pete called me earlier today and said he probably wasn't going to be here, but I'm just double-checking it to make sure he couldn't make it, so Pete's not here. We'll close the public agenda and return to the regular agenda. Item six, Item 6.1, Review and Approve Franchise Agreement Between the City of Tupelo, Mississippi and Comcast of Tupelo Incorporated. So, I have a motion.
Make a motion, we approve.
I have a motion by Markel Whittington. I got a second by Travis Beard. Discussion.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
We have been meeting with this, we've had a lot of work sessions on this issue, and I have dealt with the past couple, or the past franchise agreement with them. And the big issue is service complaints from the citizens in Tupelo on their service. But one of my main issues representing Ward Six in West Tupelo, we have new growth and new homes being built, and we are trying to do everything we can to up the quality of life inside the city limits of Tupelo. We have developers that are wanting to extend development from subdivisions and make a loop, and Comcast will not sit down, negotiate with developers. Mr. Shane Hooper on the third floor has reached out to them since our last meeting to sit down with developers and try to get them to go in with, on the front end, or when they build a new loop. They're the big boys, and they will not work with us. With this contract, it's all geared towards Comcast, and they can continue to do what they're doing with the citizens of Tupelo, and if we pass this agreement, they're going to continue to do it, and we're still going to get complaints, and we have two, two developers right now that's needing that service. And I know it's an economic issue where it's a big corporation, and they have to justify running their lines, and it's going to cost X amount and everything else. But if they're inside the city limits of Tupelo and we have a contract with them, and then they extend homes, 20 or 30 homes on a subdivision within a subdivision that has it, they ought to be required to run those lines if they're developer. If we could add in the contract, when the subdivision gets half full, a third full, or whatever that magic number, if Comcast would just come to the meeting on the third floor that Mr. Shane Hooper has asked for, sit down with developers, maybe we could come to an agreement to move forward with the developers and have them to work more for the city of Tupelo. I supported the Comcast cable agreement last time, years ago, but knowing what I knew then, and still know what I know now, and nothing has changed, I just cannot vote for this contract. And I would like to add one other thing. It's like Mr. Willie Jennings said in one of our meetings. He said, "We were the first city that they had Comcast cable in." You would think that they would really want to work with the city of Tupelo on our growth and adding homes. I just cannot support it at this time. I wish we could table it, maybe get them back in here, come up with. And I know that they're regulated by the federal government and stuff, and I know they have certain things, but at the point in time we're at, where's the customer service?
Whitting?
Oh, Mr. President, I would like to ask, is Shane, Mr. Hooper, can you, I'd like to ask a question. And I apologize, I should have asked it yesterday in the work session. That comment that Mike and I were going to ask the question with when they was here about sitting down with the contractors, what's your intake on that? Have they responded at all to you on that?
To my knowledge, Mr. Jennings, they have not responded. There were several people that were copied in the email, and to my knowledge, no one else that was copied on the email has been communicated with on that subject and that request for a meeting either.
So, you, do you feel like they would be willing to sit down, and I know they said they hadn't responded, but...
The gentleman that was here after the work session stated that they would be willing to sit down with us if I would reach out to him and give him an opportunity to set up a meeting, and that has not occurred. He did not set that meeting up.
I, when we was in the work session with them, and I had a question, and Mike had asked the question that I was going to ask, so I didn't, I didn't go into it, but I just feel like they're not interested in working with the city. Like I said, the city, we want the city to grow, and you build a house, and you can't get that type of service, just like you living out in the country can't get it. So, it's unfair for people to build a $200,000, $300,000, $400,000 house, can't get those types of services in this modern day time. So, I feel like we ought to table this until we can get it one last chance, come back to table it, just let that question alone and see whether they work with us, with the developers some type of way. That's my, that would be my intake. I feel like we ought to table it till the next meeting, get them a chance to come back.
I agree with you, Mr. Jennings, and I will entertain a motion to amend the motion to table this.
I was going to order you, are you moving to table?
Can I move to table?
Yes.
I made that motion to move to table.
I got a motion to move to table it. I got a second, a motion by Mike Bryan and a second Willie Jennings.
Is that, is that a motion to table it till the next session?
Well, it'll just go on the table until we take it off the table.
It will stay on the agenda?
It just stays on the agenda until we take action on it.
Okay.
All in favor of tabling? The, Item 6.1 has been tapered by unanimous decision. Item seven, Routine Agenda. Item 7.1, Review and Approve Minutes of Regular City Council Meeting on Tuesday, November 15, 2016. And minutes of the special call meeting on Tuesday, November 29, 2016. I got a motion by Travis Beard.
Second.
I got a second by Markel Whittington. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Issue unanimous. Item 7.2, Review and Approve Reject Advertising and Promotional Expenses.
Make a motion, we approve.
Second. I have a motion by Markel Whittington. Who was the second? Was that Willie Jennings? We have two items on here. Mayor, could you explain these, please?
I'm actually going to have a little difficulty doing that. I don't remember what they, what they are. If I could ask one of my dear friends to help.
Do you feel, do you feel comfortable with this?
These outreach. As usual, Mr. Lewis is going to save me.
Okay, as always, we have to come before you when there's requests put on the, for sponsorship or advertisement. The one is the Prestige, which was the holiday, which is a holiday concert at Civic Auditorium, which will have a group there deter, determined? Determined, and a, and a, they, they have several other groups that'll be, that'll be at their, at the concert. And that's a request for that sponsorship from the mayor's outreach. And the second one is a request for a, a new program, or one that we added that had not been added prior to that because I had misplaced the paperwork, but it's called Mommy Me Time. It's a program that is sponsored through Create and meets our requirements for sponsorship, and again, it's another program that we are working with Marcus and the community to put on at the, at the skates on. So, those are the two requests that you have there.
Any more discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimous. Item 7.3, Review and Pay the Bills.
Make a motion that we pay bills?
Second.
Got a motion by Willie Jennings, a second by Buddy Palmer. The bills are paid by Markel Whittington, Willie Jennings, Buddy Palmer, Lynn Bryan, and Travis Beard. All in favor? Bills paid, unanimous. Item 7.4, Review and Approve Homeland Security Grant Statewide Training Coordinator.
I move that we approve the Homeland Security Grant for statewide training coordinator.
Second.
I have a motion by Travis Beard and a second by Buddy Palmer. Is there any discussion on this? All in favor? Motion carries, unanimous. Item 7.5, Review and Approve Homeland Security Grant for the Tupelo Fire Department.
Make a motion, we approve.
Second.
I have a second by, I mean, a motion by Markel Whittington and a second by Mike Bryan. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Item 7.6, Review and Approve FY 2017 Budget Revision Number One.
I make a motion that we approve this FY budget for.
Second.
Provision number one.
I got a motion by Willie Jennings and a second by Travis Beard. Mayor, could we get Ms. Hannah to explain this, please?
Did I fumble so bad the last time I've lost my privilege to?
You're just sitting in the corner.
The budget amendment request that's before you tonight is the first budget amendment of, of the fiscal year 2017. We're asking to amend two funds. We're asking to amend the general fund for both grants and donations, and we're asking to amend the capital plan for just donations. And I'll quickly go over the donations. We're, we have actually received that we're holding $723 from Freuds for our fire department, as well as $1,500 that was accepted by this council in November for the parking reg department. You'll see both of those items and in the general fund under their expenses for the appropriate department. We're also asking to roll over $62,500 for homeland security that we received the award in 2016, but we have not received the funds, nor we have we expended the funds, and we're asking to place that in this budget year, the current budget year, as well as two new grants. As well as two new grants, $62,500 for our EOD unit that will purchase both supplies, services, and equipment. Also, we have $500 additional money from the Forestry Commission for the Public Works Department, and we have a $60,000 grant for the task force, the statewide coordinator that does the Homeland Security training. All of those are in the general fund. The only other item that we've got in the capital plan are several donations that will be coming through for police equipment. Those are coming from HM Richard that needs to be accepted for $5,000, $200 from Jordan Carpet, and $500 from Independent Furniture. Those have all made a contribution to the police department.
All right, thank you, Ms. Hannah.
You're welcome.
Any more discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Item 7.7, review and approve closing of a bank account.
Make a motion to close the bank account.
Second.
I got a motion by Travis Beard and a second by Markel Whittington. This is to close a bank account at Trustmark Bank that was, had to deal with Phase 5, major thoroughfare. And as of October the 1st, 2016, we started Phase 6, and therefore, we have transferred all the funds out of that account into the new bank account. All in favor? Motion carries. Item 7.8, review and approve an appointment to the Tupelo Airport Authority Board.
I move that we approve these reappointments.
Second.
I got a motion by Buddy Palmer and a second by, who was that? Willie? Willie Jennings? Mayor?
Thank you. This is appointment of Mr. Trice Webb to the Tupelo Airport Authority. Mr. Webb is a lifelong resident of the city of Tupelo. He is a private pilot, learned to fly here at the Tupelo Airport, previously worked for Starkway Air Service and Jackson Air Center. I think, you know, kind of growing up there at the airport, he would be a good fit of a lifelong citizen, again, with an interest in making sure that the airport runs smoothly. He's currently the inbound logistics manager at UFI Transportation in Tupelo, and again, for my Mississippi State, fellow Mississippi State friends, he has a Bachelor's of Business Administration from Mississippi State, and I would respectfully, he was not able to be here tonight, but would respectfully request the confirmation of his nomination at this time.
All right, any more discussion? All in favor? He's appointed. Item 7.9, review and approve reappointments to the Tupelo Park Advisory Board.
Make a motion, we approve the reappointments.
Second.
Got a motion by Markel Whittington and a second by Travis Beard. We have three reappointments. For Ward 1, it'll be Robin Fawcett. Ward 2 is Mike Menard, and Ward 3 is Jack Keane, and all three have served in this capacity before. Any more discussion? All in favor? Well, could we get everybody to recognize anybody?
Jack is here.
Or three.
Mayor, why don't you go ahead and announce them all?
Okay. Just Mr. Robin Fawcett, Mr. Mike Menard, and Mr. Jack Keane, could you gentlemen please stand? These are three gentlemen for reappointment to the Park and Recreation Advisory Board.
All in favor? Motion carries. Item 7.10, review and approve requests to surplus items for the Tupelo Police Department.
I make a motion that we surplus these items.
Second.
Got a motion by Willie Jennings and a second by Markel Whittington. Mayor?
Yes, these are 226 bicycles that, for whatever reason, from being lost, stolen, or whatever, have been accumulated over the years. They're not in any condition to be used. They have zero fair market value, and the request is to surplus them. I did want to mention, just for purposes of the minutes, purposes for those here and anyone watching at home, unfortunately, state law does not allow a city municipality to make a charitable donation, just to give them away. You have to either utilize them, sell them in a manner accordance to law, or surplus them. And so, that's the only options we have, and that is what we're requesting to be done at this time.
Any more discussion?
So, the council can't use them to ride to work on?
We're going to find one specially for you.
Okay. All in favor? Motion carries.
Give me the word.
Item 7.11, review and approve request to allow police officers to wear a police uniform, be issued proper equipment for security and deterrent at Belk Department Store.
So moved. Second.
Got a motion by Mike Bryan and a second by Buddy Palmer. This is a request to add another officer to the list, the, every year, the... Ben, explain this to people in the public. We do it every year, but it's... Explain how this works, so they know.
The authorization for police officers to wear their uniform and their service revolver or weapon is a common statute between counties and cities, where the state legislature allows that to happen for deputy sheriffs and for city policemen. They, we enter into a, not a contract, but the, MacRae, well, I'll give you backup, Belk would request officers to fill in and provide this security and to be able to wear their police uniform and have their weapon. The officers have the opportunity to come by and sign up for either Belk or the mall in its entirety. There's two different details there. We have to spread it on the minutes, those individuals that can work the Belk detail or the mall at Barnes Crossing detail. I think in this case, Jay Marshall is, he's on the mall detail, but it's a different owner or different ownership interest there, and so he needs to be added to the Belk detail. And that's what we're doing here. They are not, they are paid directly by the business, the question, the detail, the business has to carry workers' compensation and liability insurance and have to sign an agreement, agreeing to indemnify the city in case a suit is brought against the city. But they are independent contractors for the department store, for the business, and the only thing that they're allowed to do is wear their uniform and have their weapon.
Good, thank you, Ben. Any more questions? All in favor? Motion carries. Item 7.12, review and accept minutes of the planning committee meeting of November the 7th, 2016.
Make a motion, we accept the minutes.
Second.
Got a motion by Markel Whittington and a second by Travis Beard. Any questions? All in favor? Motion carries. Item 7.13, review and approve request for donation of leave to employee of Development Services Department.
I make a motion to approve this request.
Second.
A motion by Buddy Palmer and a second by Willie Jennings. We have a certain section of the handbook that allows other employees to donate leave if somebody is sick, but it has to be spread across the minutes to have, so that's just what we're doing. So, we have somebody, in this case, somebody truly, really needs it. All right, all in favor? Motion carries. Item 7.14, review and accept minutes of the Tupelo Major Thoroughfare Program meeting of October the 10th, 2016.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Travis Beard and a second by Markel Whittington. All in favor? Motion carries. Item 7.15, review and accept minutes of Tupelo Coliseum Commission meeting of Tuesday, October the 25th, 2016.
I'm moved to accept these minutes.
Second.
Got a motion by Mike Bryan and a second by Buddy Palmer. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Item 7.16, review and approve resolution, amend employee handbook, section 507, overtime compensatory leave.
Make a motion, we approve the resolution.
Second.
Got a motion by Markel Whittington and a second by Mike Bryan. Mayor, you're going to have to explain this one.
Okay. President Bryan, this is a resolution for the city of Tupelo to comply with federal Department of Labor Fair Labor Standards Act. This is essentially to allow our employees to accrue more comp time as opposed to being paid overtime. That is to comply with federal, again, federal law. The federal law, and again, Mr. Logan may be better too, but this past year, the federal law changed to make a, on full-time employees, essentially a mandatory minimum salary. We passed our municipal budget, affected about a dozen or so employees, and we passed our budget to comply with federal law. That's a little bit in limbo, but this is further to change our personnel policy to comply with that law, so that in lieu of overtime, when the employees work over, they gain comp time, consistent with those regulations.
Any more discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Item 7.17, review and approve an addendum to the existing contract with DRS for Welcome Center project for the Convention and Visitors Bureau.
Make a motion, we approve the addendum.
Second.
Got a motion by Markel Whittington and a second by Mike Bryan. Neil, why don't you explain this, real quick, please?
This is an addendum to an original contract that we had with DRS, which is a design group that is designing a renovation of our Welcome Center. And what this does is it carries us to the creative stage. It's hard to put the creative professional services inside a bricks and mortar type bid document, so what this is, is this carrying us through to do the creative work, the technology component, the design, the graphic design elements, and so this will take us through the museum-type exhibit creation.
Any more questions? All in favor? Motion carries. Item 7.18, review and award reject bids for Tupelo Water and Light Department. Johnny, oh, I'm sorry.
Make a motion.
I got a motion by Buddy Palmer.
Second.
Second by Travis Beard. Johnny, tell us.
The first bid before you, bid number 1441, is actually a 1991 High Ranger, 55-foot High Ranger bucket truck that we surplused, and we just, instead of going to auction, we took sealed bids on it. And I would recommend to you, Mr. Robert Hawkins, at the price of $5,271 for this 1991 bucket truck.
All right, and then your... John?
I'm going to bid on the separate.
Go ahead and explain the other one, and then we'll put on separately.
Okay. The bid number 1442 is for a total rebuild of a Digger Derrick, 65-foot Digger Derrick truck, to Tarex at the price of $51,395, and I would recommend them to you also.
Okay. The motion and second we have will go for bid number 1441WL, and then I'll ask for another motion on the second. All in favor of the first? The motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve the second bid item?
I move we accept that second bid.
Second.
All right, Buddy Palmer made a motion, and a second by Mike Bryan. All in favor? And the motion carries. Item 7.19, review and amend amendment to all previous ordinances established, schedule rules and fees for utility service, services furnished to consumers of the city of Tupelo.
I move that we accept new rules for water service and light service to the city of Tupelo.
Second.
I got a motion by Travis Beard and a second by Markel Whittington. Johnny?
This item is more of a clarification of the rules and rigs of the Water and Light Department. Under late notices, we wanted just to make the change in the last sentence there to bill due date. People were actually reading that as if they had an additional days from the late notice date, but it's actually from the original due date. Also, under item 11, disconnection for non-payment, same way in there, just change it to bill due date and not late notice date. That's the only clarification.
All in favor? Motion carries. Item 7.20, review and approve request to travel out of country.
Make a motion to approve.
Got a motion by Markel Whittington.
Second.
Second by Mike Bryan. This is a request for travel out of country for myself and the mayor on a Mississippi Development Authority-coordinated trade mission to Cuba. Any questions?
Mayor, did you explain to what the, you said trade there, but what, can you explain a little bit more about what you're specific, talking about trade deals? Is that anything specific that you're looking at?
Well, the MDA will coordinate it, and the way these work, every delegate, for lack of a better word, say it, will be scheduled meetings with either government officials, businesses, whatever the case may be. So, Councilman President Bryan and I would be assigned by MDA to meet with certain officials from there, certain business owners from there, and it would correspond with something that would help. Tupelo or from MDA, you know, they're focused on statewide. So, from Tupelo, what you're probably looking at is more in the furniture manufacturing trade. You know, they've had an embargo for, you know, what, 60 years? So, they're going to be opened unless the incoming president changes the rules, open for trade with the United States. What the Mississippi Development Authority wants to do is put Mississippi in a good position because of our proximity to get some of that trade, or get some of that business. So, what we want to do is sell products made in Mississippi there in Cuba. I don't know if Cuba, like Israel, will be in a position to manufacture goods here. It's a little bit different than Israel trip. We're trying to get them to put manufacturing plants here in Mississippi. So, that's kind of a long answer. That's assigned by the coordinator of that trip from the Mississippi Development Authority. So...
That's fine. I just want to explain to the public, and that's to help them understand that part. So, thank you.
Any more questions? All in favor? Motion carries. Item 7.21, review and approve sale of property at Campground Road, formerly County Road 1698, to Mike Timmons.
Make a motion, we approve the sale.
Second.
Got a motion by Mike, correction, Markel Whittington, and a second by Travis Beard. Mayor?
If I could, on this one, refer to Mr. Logan.
President Bryan, if we could, I'd ask to move that to the study agenda. There were some questions on it in pre-council, and I'm waiting on a suit to quiet and confirm title to be filed in Chancery Court. That will make this a little easier to do, and request that the council entertain a motion to...
Our legal councils ask us to rescind this motion and move item 7.21 to the study agenda.
I make a motion to rescind my motion and move it to the study agenda.
Second.
I have a second by Mike Bryan. All in favor to rescind the previous motion and move item 7.121 to the study agenda? Raise your hand. Motion carries. Item 7.22 is, the governor has proclaimed that... I got this written wrong. All right, here, I'm sorry, I got it right here. 7.22. Do I have a motion, I make, do I have here motions for the, to approve the governor's proclamation proclaiming additional day for Thanksgiving, for Christmas holidays? proclamation proclaiming additional day for Thanksgiving, Christmas holidays, Friday, December the 23rd, 2016?
Second.
All right, Willie Jennings made the motion, Buddy Palmer was the second. Mayor, could you explain that, please, sir?
Yes, sir. The municipalities throughout the state of Mississippi can only close for emergency situations such as, you know, snowstorm, tornado, and so forth, or when there is a corresponding proclamation from the governor. We previously had adopted to close the municipal offices of the city of Tupelo for Thanksgiving and Christmas to correspond with the governor's previous proclamation. Today, the governor issued a supplemental proclamation to also declare Friday, December 23rd, a state holiday in recognition of the Christmas holiday, and the request is to adopt that proclamation or issue a resolution, corresponding resolution, for the city of Tupelo municipal offices to close Friday, December 23rd, in recognition of the Christmas holiday.
Any more discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Item, item 8, the study agenda. Item 8.2, Review and Discuss Request for Permission to Place Structure in Barley Court Right-of-Way.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion that we would move this item up and vote on it tonight.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Jennings to move item 8.2 to the action agenda or the routine agenda. Do I have a motion? Well, I got a motion by Mr. Jennings. I have a second.
I second.
I got a second by Travis Beard. All in favor? Motion's moved up. Do I have a motion to approve the request to place a structure in the right-of-way at Barley Court?
I make a motion that we accept permission or grant permission to put a structure at Barley Courts in the right-of-way.
Mr. President, we need to make a second to this, right?
Yeah, second.
Second.
Okay. All right, I got a motion by Travis Beard and a second by Willie Jennings. Discussion?
Discussion, there was some discussion about the gate. Do that need to be in, do you, we need anything on that? Mr. Hooper, to go ahead and do it?
In a memo to the council from Pat Faulkner dated November 17th, I'll read this into the minutes. We have received a request for permission to replace a sign that is now located in the right-of-way of this public street, and to construct two gates that will encroach into the public street when they swing open. The gates will not be across the public street, but are to control access to the newly renovated Barley Court complex. This request has been reviewed by Public Works, Water and Light, and the Fire Department with no objections made.
Any more discussion? All right, so just to be clear, this motion is to approve the sign and the gates at Barley Court.
Let's give a clarification on the motion.
My motion would include permission to place a structure at Barley Courts in the right-of-way, and also to allow the gates that would be installed to cross public streets when they were swinging.
So that's clarified. All in favor? Willie Jennings? The motion carries. Item 9, Executive Session. Ms. Logan, do you see a need for executive session?
Just a very brief executive session by the personnel body.
Okay. Do I have a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Mike Bryan and a second by Buddy Palmer.